I'd like to call the planning commission meeting to order. Most of us are in attendance today, I think we just have one absence, so we have established quorum. I do need to administer an oath to anyone that is planning on speaking, but I don't think we're going to have any today. If the camera was faced out there, there's no one in attendance, other than our planner and code enforcer, I'm going to call you Paskey. We do have first-hand agenda disposition in the last meeting minutes. They are attached to the backside of your agenda, so everyone had an opportunity to review.
Yeah, more or less. As move we accept the minutes of April 3rd, 2014.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion or comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
One abstention.
Alright, RJ, I'm standing, thank you. Further discussion, I hope not. Cases, we have none on the agenda this afternoon, and we did confirm it, thank you Charlene, as well. We are, usually we do, John, correct me if I'm wrong, we ask for about, you know, one week notice for cases, it's when the agenda's done. We still, even sometimes, will make arrangements outside of that, so don't be afraid. Communications, the item on the agenda is Title 23 zoning code, and we were kind of focusing on the corridors and area development, so this was chapter two of the Phase Two implementation for the City of Athens Comprehensive Plan, that was, you know, the 2020 vision for the City of Athens, so I think Planner Paul Logue has addressed that we're probably due to an update sometime soon, so 2010 doesn't, or 2020 doesn't actually catch up with us when we have the next vision. But corridors and area development is what we were focusing on. We had assigned each one of the planning commission members a particular corridor to look at, one that either they kind of worked on, as in their place of employment outside of their city, where they live, something that seems like it made sense for each member. The one I had was the Richland Avenue, I believe, RJ, you were looking at, wasn't Union?
Stimson and Carpenter.
Stimson, okay.
I had West Union.
Okay, and Nancy had Columbus Road, what section did you have?
East State.
Oh, there you go. Place we all know and love.
Yeah.
What I had asked each member to do is to look at the, basically, what, I guess the way, if you haven't seen the, this section of the Comprehensive Plan, it particularly pertains to corridors, these are kind of the routes in and out of the city, the major sort of through fares. Corridors are typically where the idea is that you want commercial development to be focused, and allow access to various, either commercial areas, or recreational areas, or institutional areas of the city. The, how they set it up is, if I go to, for example, with the Columbus Road, or I'm sorry, Richland Avenue one, which was my focus, it basically outlined the existing conditions, the natural features, the land uses, transportation, as well as sort of, kind of an idea of what the future development and/or redevelopment of that area is. It would describe whether it was, you know, primarily built up, if there was opportunity for new development, or if it was mostly from a redevelopment standpoint, on any future projects in that area. There would also be a suggestion of future regulatory initiatives. One of the ones that we had talked about was this idea of overlays, whether an overlay could, so in other words, you still have the zoning code standing on its own, but you would have an overlay per each corridor, so that the zoning code would still apply, whether it was a B3 or R2 zoned lot, but you'd have an overlay that would set up based on each one of the corridors. So that, these were some of the initiatives that were proposed in the Comprehensive Plan. And then it would sort of suggest what that overlay would look like, what sort of regulatory parts would be in it. And they're kind of, you know, sort of generic template in a way, some things specific to that district, some things where, you know, it still kind of requires a little more work on our part, or the planner's part, or City Council, whoever was going to, you know, actually bring this into code, and fill out the missing blanks. So, with that being said, the idea was that you, taking this in hand, you went out into your corridor and said, yep, that's the, that's definitely the existing uses that I see, you know, again, this was done about, realistically, 10, if not more, where the actual labelwork was done years ago, correct?
Yeah.
So, you know, much is, you know, in some places, much has happened in those corridors, and other places, not as much. So it's more of a confirmation of, yeah, that's where the existing condition's still, and yes, this is what makes sense from a regulatory standpoint, or future development standpoint, or if not, what, you know, I think we probably should wait till Nancy is here, but what are kind of the future suggestions for our corridors? Maybe now, on this one, since I know I myself have to leave a little earlier than we tend to hold our meetings, that maybe we could just focus on a verification of what we saw from an existing standpoint? To kind of focus the discussion, does that seem reasonable to everyone? It's not a motion.
I'll bite.
Alright, alright, you want to go first?
Well, in some ways, I sent out, or you should have received, you don't have anything on Stimson, I apologize for that, because that's still in planning, but that kind of gives you a free range, you know, as you look at what the future is. Did send out the Richland South plans, as we have now, or at least access to finding them, since they're so large, and then of course, West Union, just the design from Schaefer there. So, when I look at East State Street, and I went, oh, it's so large and so huge, but we have the ODOT safety study coming up, and so on, May 8th, we're going to have an open house public forum at the community center to view those results, and they did, not only did they look at just the interchange, they took it all the way from Homestory to Walmart, and they, we asked them to focus on pedestrian movement as well, and not to leave anything off the table, so it'll be interesting to see what they bring back to us. But in my drive, my first thought was, it's really dull and boring, as you're just about to enter that corridor of East State beyond home, you know, you've got your typical green sign up there that says, you know, Athens or Columbus this way and that way, so kind of thinking, maybe we can look at something to enrich that.
Okay.
There are a number of vacant lots, I was surprised at the number, the large swaths of land that are still available and untouched, as you go further out of East State Street. A little bit of concern is, you know, we've got the standing Obrios, in terms of an empty storefront. I took a picture of Radio Shack and Staples, because we don't know what the future will be there, in case there's some big box retailers.
Pizza Hut's in transition too, there's an empty Pizza Hut restaurant there, right next to Obrios.
Well, that's going to be the Tim Hortons.
Not there yet, though.
Co-Depp's, Stone Creamery, so I kind of was thinking that that one was going to be occupied.
They already got it.
There are a lot of cats that live on the back of the malls amongst the trash.
Really?
And you know, I will say, the trash seemed confined to, you know, blow over to the bikeway area, but the back of the, the back of the storefronts, I thought, were pretty organized and fairly clean.
That's because they just got tickets from us last week, so.
That'll do it.
That'll do it.
Do you time this?
Yes.
And then, the other thing related to the vacancies, the other changes are like the big swath that's at Maplewood and New Market, you know, the for sale sign there, what will happen there, you know, what kind of business will that become? There were two vacancies in that, what we call the Old Athens Mall, I'm not sure what, you know, the first mall, on the right, but then again, those are, I think, there would just seem to be many storefronts that appeared vacant, so. And then I, a big progress for me is still how you protect that residential neighborhood from the business.
And of course, you still have, let's see, Maplewood's still for sale, I think you mentioned, one by Avalanche Pizza, I see the house there, which is in fairly poor shape, is being listed as commercial, and it also says four bedroom at the same time, I could anticipate that, I think that's a B1 zone.
I didn't go that far.
Okay.
I was restricting mine from home, but if I've got to go up East State, that's a whole different.
Mayor, that's B3, and I actually have informed every property owner, every person inquiring about that, that it will have to go through, it'd be a business, that even if it wanted to become a rental, it's got to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
They cut down every tree almost in that backyard.
It's a B3 zone.
It's a B3 zone. That, right next to Avalanche.
That is a B3 zone.
That is a B3 zone.
I thought everything on that side was B.
No, it's B3.
Larry Conroft Realty.
Been a, yeah, it's been a lot of inquiry about that property.
So why, zoning board appeals because?
It's been vacant for greater than a year, and it's a residential use, it's been non-existent for.
Why is it non-conforming, in terms of rent, as a rental unit?
Correct.
Okay.
Or as a house, as a residential unit.
The way the lot was being chewed up, I assumed it would be torn down, turned into a business. That's why I was looking at transition on that.
Which lot particularly was?
Right, just to the right-hand side of Avalanche.
West of Avalanche Pizza, there's a house for sale there. And the way the trees have been, in the back's been churned, I assumed that there was some of.
There's access from the alley in the rear for parking.
Oh, is that why it's that way?
That's what's, yeah.
That's why all those trees were cut.
Probably so. I have the curb cut application on my desk, but I was waiting for Andy to return.
From the alley?
No.
For East State?
Yes.
You know, I.
I don't have a poker face, but I mean, Speedway is right there.
Right.
Two wide swaths, and then you've got the Avalanche driveway, that's got two different cuts there, so it's, it'll be interesting to see, we'll have to look at it from a safety perspective.
Safety point of view, you're correct.
But that's why I thought.
Well, you know, I guess, I mean, I think you're kind of bringing a big interest point, and again, maybe it's getting off topic from what's in the Comprehensive Plan in a way, but you know, they look at the corridor as from the inner, the 3350 intersection out at, you know, where the auto repair and the.
Autotech, I think.
Yeah, autotech, correct. You know, holes are hospital systems, or medical systems over there, and then up over to the, you know, very, I guess I should say 33, I said 33 on the opposite side, but that, that sort of section that's hemmed in by the highway intersections as the corridor. So you're kind of got two gateways to, you know, they don't, you typically, we're thinking of these corridors as kind of maybe like leading into the city center, but this one's sort of like a leading into itself, where you've got two gateways on either side of the corridor, so it's, it really is a gateway to the corridor, not so much a gateway to the city, per se. But yeah, you wondered, do we need to look at a corridor that actually goes the opposite direction now with the, or is that still not so much a, you know, it's more from a B1 side, and those should be just sort of neighborhood.
Well, I think it does need studied, and we're constantly getting requests for additional study in that area, because of the vibrancy of the Village Bakery in those areas, but there's only five of us, so I just wondered if we could maybe get through this initial task.
Oh, I, I understand that entirely.
And lastly, I have not, but I plan on taking pictures of signs. There's a lot of signage on East State Street.
Okay, I can jump in, I guess, and Union Street Route 56, that was in Phase Two of our Comprehensive Plan, pages 2-36 and 37, I believe. Wasn't much more than that, there's also a map further down, so it's very, the coverage of, in the Comprehensive Plan, was fairly light for the Carter, for the Union Street 56 Carter. I've done some quick looking at it, I can't say I'm done yet, because of just, I do, I myself want to take some pictures and see where we want to go with it. If you look at the zone, and I started branching out, I mean, essentially this, the sections they talk about, 35 and 36 and 37, they're pretty much looking at the, you know, the extension further out, you know, like existing land uses, of course, you know, they talk about the B, we've got a B3 there, we have manufacturing, we have one or a few manufacturing sections over there, is further out in the Kenny Drive, they speak of, surrounded by an R1 zone, interesting enough. Realize we're talking about in the future extending our, possibly extending our sewer system out there, so you can see some potential for growth of that. I kind of tried backtracking too, you look at, say, a lot of it's in floodplain, a lot of the units further, land further in, going towards Schaefer, of course, is university-owned. Actually, if you look at it, it's got, it's got a lot of different entities playing there. You have the fairgrounds, Fairboard, that owns an entity, a piece there, you have a cemetery, which would not change that much, you've got the hospital corridor, which of course is in transition, and again, all in a floodplain, all in a well, some of it's in a well-headed protection area of Neo Obelens, of course, Ohio Health of Obelens. Further up the hill towards High Street, downtown, of course, it's mostly developed, the question is, what do you want, if you want to look at that, because it goes everything from B2D to, to R3s, to B3s, and again, it's such a kind of a mix there, B1s included, by, I guess, the diner and the smiling skull. I started reading the articles that the planner gave us, practical zoning corridors, as well as the form-based zoning, so I got a kind of a stray on that, because I noticed they talk about transitions or transects going from urban to rural, and this is, this is a corridor that demonstrates that pretty well.
Yeah.
I mean, as soon as you get into the, you know, going from, as I say, a B2D downtown, as soon as, as condensed as you can get, to the B1 on the Union Street between, I guess it would be Depot to High Street there, that, that's actually an opportunity for development there, though it's already pretty much locked in, university on one side, but a series of small businesses on the other side, and the question is, what do we want that to look like? The tran, you know, again, and I'll have to sometime have a nice long conversation with the planner, that to me is a walkable area, the question is, how far does that, you know, does that extend down to? Would it go all the way to Schaefer? I mean, do we want to start developing that? The university, again, holding one side of it, they pretty much have everything on the south side of West Union. The other side, of course, has a series of residential, you know, although it's mostly, you know, again, it's a, it's a mix there of everything from manufacturing to R, to B3, and, and the cemetery, of course, is not going to change, you know, that, you'd look at that and say, we can make that open space for all matters. The manufacturing of interest, if you want development, though, is the parcel that's to the, I guess, realized, Union turns into State Route 56 at 682.
Right.
So, and it kind of starts taking a north to south axis. At that point, everything on the other, to be the west side of Union or Route 56, some of it's owned by ODOT, I believe, that's their, their station there for this area, they're actually going to, I hear, invest in that, they're going to be revamping it, so that's not going to change the footprint too much on that. On the other side of though, you look and say, there's, there's, then you have the drop down into, I guess it's Margaret's Creek, technically. I know in the past, there's been approach as of doing something with that, it also.
You're talking about like the Hoon property?
Hoon property, yes. And that's it, that's, that's probably floodplain, it's probably well, somewhat wellhead, because it empties into our wellhead protection area, but it also has one of the few areas where we actually overlap with a rail, railway area, not that there's a spur there or any place to stop, but that's where the best possi, potentials would be for, to maintain that is manufacturing. The question is, of course, if you start looking at transitions, then you start saying, well, you know, what happens to that rural aspect? And if we're going to be extending our infrastructure out 56, that all becomes ripe for a lot of improvements, or rather, building. And that's as far as I got, I start saying, there's, there's, what do we want it to look like? When, you know, show it as Numberfest, what do we, where do we start or stop our pedestrian area? Because right now, it goes all the way out to Morrison, I guess Gordon School, the pedestrian at a Numberfest, and I don't need to take a dig at that, but the question is, that, this whole swath there are not really suitable for pedestrian traffic, so when you talk about transition from rural to, you know, to urban, what do we want that to look like? When do we start saying, okay, we walk down, when do we change our parking requirements? When do we want to change our bulk? We've talked about overlays, but again, having read the zoning parts with.
Right, the idea is that you can change the bulk controls and that, based on the overlay.
Yeah, but part of the thing, if I'm reading this chapter six and two, or something like that, that Paul Logue gave us, the planner gave us, is that you don't want to just cob it together, you really want to do a C-change of the zoning requirements, in terms of bulk control.
Alright.
And, and that's really where I got stuck, because it requires a lot of input of what you want to see there. I mean, I look at the, the area of, between High and Depot, or High and Schaefer, that really is, is going to eventually be all mostly pedestrian-driven, so we have to look and say, we got to change the corridors, we've got to change the sidewalk positioning, we've got to make it so it feels pedestrian-friendly, and I know we're having discussions with the university about crosswalks, et cetera, et cetera, but how do, you know, how do we change the flavor of that going down a hill like that? And as I say, it would probably take it all the way to Schaefer, since it's where the infrastructure's going, in terms of the university's growth. That to me is probably more, I kind of got stuck on that, even though if you go after that, it starts, everything starts to stretch out after Schaefer.
Right.
West of Schaefer, you look and say, you know, Siemens as a, as a market, it's fairly, it's fairly empty, it's basically like a parking lot and a building.
Right.
To the other side, you know, we don't know what's going, the fairgrounds are going to do in the future, and that's an unknown, but how do we plan for that? If that ends up to be, I know you was, Ohio University was looking at that as a medical corridor at one point, so if that ends to be that, there's a whole different feel for that. Does, will it be like a mirror image of what you see at Obelens and Castro? You know, do you expect that to happen?
I do.
You, well.
Absolutely do.
Well, what would it look like when you do that? I mean, and, and if it does happen, you know, what controls here we have it, if we're dealing with a state entity at that point? So how do you put an overlay in there and say, okay, this is what we want you to follow? You know, and in the wellhead area, and in the floodplain area? You know, and, and again, my concern when the big picture is, again, the Hundred Year Flood would affect, you know, some of our critical infrastructure, which includes the hospital, you know, and, you know, so do we, do we try, you know, saying, don't do it there, you know, don't put anything critical there? So that's as far as I got, I still got more to do, I have, I took a, some pictures, but I'm not sure, you know, to try to tie it in, I've been looking at the bulk controls and see where that, that mix is, I think that we need to look at some changes there, definitely. But again, it's where we want that transition to occur for the pedestrian side. As I said, I see people walking down to Schaefer all the time, on the street, or rather, on the sidewalk, the sidewalks are adequate there, but they could be done better.
We're actually are going to do some improvements in the sidewalks where needed, as identified in the West Union Plan, just from Schaefer to.
Yeah, I did not dig down that far into the plan, it's just 22 pages of specs on it.
Well, you did bring up with the sidewalk issue, and I know one of the things that is the, one of the programs that the City of Athens had used, is the, you know, safe, safe sidewalks to school.
Safe routes to school, yeah.
Safe routes to school, but it's.
It's really geared for elementary.
Are you going to accomplish it, yeah.
And there's not a.
Are you going to, yeah, Morrison seems like a sort of oddity to make that work, because you know, the other ones are in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
You can do that, but.
What was the other thing of interest? I noticed there's a little, a little spot in there that's outside the city limits, by Gibson Road, do you know anything about that? When I was going to the GIS maps.
Yeah, well, I don't know anything about it, but it's outside the city limits.
It's, it's basically.
It's like a little island.
Yeah, it's a little island.
Or domed hole.
I need to backtrack on what the issue of that is.
I'm not sure why it's like that, that's who they didn't want to go next in.
Yeah, well, they got their wish, I guess.
Yeah, or the city didn't want them, because there was a sewage issue perhaps, or septic problem, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm kind of thrown off of that, that, you know, again, that's not really on the corridor, it's adjacent to the corridor.
Yeah, exactly.
West Union Carter.
Couple of houses on it.
Yeah. And, and that's it, you look at the businesses right now, they're, they're really more rural business, whether it's the rental area, or SunPower, you know, what, the Third Sun is up there too, and that's, you know, that's what we want, you want those type of industries there, how to make it function well, and then you still, the other consideration is, not to take too much time, is the, the access road side of it too, I mean, East State Street, we've been trying to make sure the access roads, you know, we limit the amount of curb cuts there. Right now, it's not a functional problem on 56, but you know, all it will take is an uptick in 10 years of traffic flow to make that difference, to make it tenable for some business to be there, and have to watch a line of cars go in and out. So, still more to do.
RJ, did you want to?
Sure, mine is brief here, I've been kind of slammed the last month here, I apologize, but had a chance to talk with a few business people on Stimson, and I think one of the biggest things that, number one, they liked the idea of a corridor overlay, the notion of that, they thought that something like that would strengthen corridors, and they approved of that. One of the biggest things that they recommended was that, that in doing something like this, that you establish in that overlay the ability to do on one side of the street what you can do on the other side of the street, where, you know, somebody can't have a restaurant on one side of the street, but on, right across from them, they can, so.
Right.
These were some things that they talked about, as far as, if we're doing some, some sort of an overlay for corridors, that you kind of have an equanimity about usage. They were concerned a little bit about, when we talked about eliminating parking spaces, or things of that nature, if you, if you ever went that route of the Comprehensive Plan idea, the enhancements anyway, were a little dubious of that, considering that they felt that there was a bit of tightness, or limited parking to some people.
Eliminating on-street parking, or off-street?
On-street parking, yeah, some people had, you know, sufficient amounts of parking in the back or the sides, that they were covered, but in other instances, a little bit tight, so they were concerned about taking away or eliminating parking on both sides of the street.
Didn't they describe what hours they're talking about? And the reason why I say that is because this is one area that we don't meter, we have a two-hour limit on Stimson.
Right.
And I know there's, there's quite a bit of turnover there.
I think what they're talking about in particular, because this leads into their thought that despite the gateway that the university is trying to build at the top or bottom of Stimson, whatever, whichever way you want to call that, that they will always see themselves as an ingress egress to the university, as far as university employees and students are concerned. They don't feel as though that's going to change, even with the gateway. They were a little, some of them, it was the first time they had heard about the possibility of a roundabout, and they were a little nervous about that, so.
They always make people nervous.
They were talking about the, you know, the, maybe needing a helipad or something like that to avoid it, or whatever, but.
Yeah.
I, I think that what they were most pleased with at this point is, they were ambivalent to the art community ideas, that if it developed, that's fine, but they would like to see the corridors basically developing as people get in there, see what they want to do, and kind of create a variety of, of usage on the corridors, that they felt, felt as though that they were in a strong position because of the number of key businesses, what they would, just core businesses that have made a go of it on Stimson for many years, you know, I've got the Ambassador Laundry, Hockey Valley Bank.
Post Office is a basic.
Post Office, and they were very pleased with the idea of how successful the bike shop has, has been since they moved to that corner, so they felt that was good usage of, you know, that particular corner on the, the street there. They were also very excited about Lamborn's coming down there, and they thought that that would also be an additional pull for that street, so they really envisioned themselves as being encouraged as to the development of the street, what's taking place there, and they liked, you know, some people pointed out that they liked the model of Rick Wasserman's apartment.
Apartment and business owner.
Apartment and storage there, they, they thought that was, you know, a good use of the space, and they liked that as maybe something to think about down the future, particularly when we talked about the, what are we going to call it, the south side of Stimson, where the post office, that side of the street, as you go down across from Kentucky Fried Chicken, you have a number of, of houses there that, you know, at one time, that was thought that that might be a, a package deal, or something like that, that somebody like the university might want to get involved with, as far as.
Improvements, yeah.
Improvements on that property, or purchasing, whatever. They felt like that was an area that they wanted to watch and see how that would develop over the next few years, as far as, as the university is establishing that gate, are they going to be interested in, in that property between there, and I guess with the gun shop that, pawn shop, I'm sorry, that.
Yeah, it's an oxygen, medical oxygen place now.
Right.
Question, I'm trying to remember, is that, is, somewhere along the line, off-street parking stops, is this stop at Elliott, or somewhere, there's a certain portion that you can't park, I know that much, at the post office you can park.
Does it stop down by the, where the bike shop is now?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, I tell you because I don't really stop there.
You can park in front of Hockey Valley Bank.
Yeah, I thought it stops right at the BP, for some reason, that intersection.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Is that Elliott?
You can park in front of, across the street from Hockey Valley, on the north side of the street, from that strip mall.
That's a good question. It's a good question, because I never, I rarely see or never see-
Yeah, that backend.
Unless it's a moving day with students, you know, where no one really parks from, say, the pawn shop down through to the bypass.
Yeah. That's what I, I don't remember seeing people park there, but I don't know if there's a, no parking or not. And that's where people pick up speed.
So how does that develop? You know, if that ever turned from residential use to commercial use in some way, how does that affect parking? Parking in the back, parking on the street, you know, what have you?
You know, from my point of view, if, if the gateway opens at the university, I, I'm expecting less traffic in general, but I don't-
I thought so too, but I thought so too, but they felt no, that it, they, they thought that it was all, people were always going to be coming up through, I mean, how you would do it now is go around Clippinger, go up that street, which is like probably the extension of South College, where Scott Quad is. They come up through there and then they'll hit, take that left to where the Schoonover Center is and then turn up North College and go home that way. Because really what the, you're seeing, I think, is a little bit of a limitation on people who work at the university or study at the university are having fewer areas in which to go to the university without going, using the bypasses, without using Richland or things of that nature. You know, I, but yeah, they, they see themselves as, as a cut over, a cut across that, that will be there.
Okay.
That reminds me, RJ, I do have something to give you, and it's that South Green Loop Road, the extension of that.
Thanks.
Because that will significantly change these habits.
Yeah, no, it is.
It will change the flow, yeah.
And, and also just how further the university wants to progress from there, once that's established, you know, over the next five, 10, 15 years, if they might have a plan for, for that.
I, I know that ATCO many years was an advocate for good sidewalks there and, and part of their rationale is mostly for the wheelchair and handicap. But the other side of it is they looked at that as a walkable corridor for the most part. And I guess that's, that, that's what I've been thinking of. Okay, what will happen over time as things build up? Do the business people expect just more car traffic to be there or, or again, we'll take on a nature of a B one, a neighborhood business? Because you talk about restaurants and you can see where a lot of people just walk, you know, from, you know, students particularly from Mill Streets and parts of Stimson and down towards and migrate towards the, the business there. I see people do pull up to go to the, the Chinese restaurant there, but if we have more restaurants there, the expectation is eventually you would have more people, that they'd be driving or walking, I guess is the question.
Well, ATCO, you know, just when I drove by there a couple of weeks ago, first time I'd been there in a while, and I, I thought that pedestrian space was rather limited in terms of you've got a really tight, you know, essentially it's an alley.
Yeah.
And you've got the, the ATCO parking that really abuts right up to the alleyway. And I don't know unless, and the back of course would be garage and driveway for the houses that abut Stimson, so.
But as I say, if that changes, what would, okay, let's, let's anticipate a change. Somebody puts it up, it's a, it's a B three, right? That whole zone. So somebody says, okay, I'm going to tear down that roadhouse, excuse me, tear down that roadhouse and then put up residential. I still have to have businesses in, in the first floor unless I chase variances. It will change the footprint of what's going on, it will change the circulation of people who want to go to the business as well as those who live there, because now you'd have to have the parking, at least in portion.
Well, I guess it's a good question, because, you know, as, as I said, I think the space back there is really limited as to what your options are. And if somebody did convert one of those houses or both, a couple houses together into a commercial space on the bottom and residential on top, you know, that, that's obviously, I think it's going to increase the usage back in there. So how do you handle that as far as people needing the services at ATCO and, and trying to access that?
And most of those alleyways back there don't really have a, a curb, so therefore it's kind of nebulous where the alley stops and starts kind of, it's not really dirt road per se, but it's, it's got that feel that-
Now, ATCO I think does have the parking along the side of the building, so I don't know if you-
I've been there, yeah.
If you develop a, a pedestrian walkway from, say, Elliott on, on the south side of, of the alley, sidewalk from Elliott to ATCO, and then join that with a sidewalk from Stimson, say on the pawn shop side or, you know, and doing something there where you can kind of have that kind of access. But, but as far as like creating a pedestrian space on the other side of the alley, I, I, you know, you know better than I, but it seems rather limited in what they could do unless-
Yeah.
Things were torn out and redeveloped.
Well, in theory, some things would get torn out and would redevelop. The question is, does the city have enough right of way? And again, once, the idea we feed out to Stimson so people can walk up Stimson and the concept there would be that Stimson feels like a good place to walk, as the sidewalk goes.
Do you have right of way on, on alleys as well as street?
We have right of ways, but they, usually average alley is about 10 feet.
Yeah.
Depends how it was platted. There's, there's, you know.
Of course, you've got the AMVET that's next to ATCO, and I don't know, that seemed kind of busy that particular day, so I don't know if they ran out space to anybody or it's just people who are, you know, clients of AMVET.
RJ, I think you need to look at that plan that Paul was talking about.
Yeah, because it will, it will help.
And, and we have, and I won't go into it, but we have had people inquire about that and actually developing off of that, if and when that ever comes in, so.
Mold machine too.
With the machine shops, exactly. Yeah.
Potential a lot of transition.
That's right.
Yeah, OU is in the neighborhood, believe me now. The other thing, speaking to that, we did some sidewalk improvements specifically to address ATCO clientele, because they, their field trips are to the rollerball. So that's why we have some improvements and curb accessible.
Yeah, I think, what's his name, Andrew Lushman has a whole binder of all the letters he has sent to the city and all the things that we've done or haven't done and our responses. He's, he's a strong advocate for that whole area, really. I don't have access to his, that's his binder, but I'm aware of the fact that he's, he's, he's been pushing that for a long time to make it, so, you know, again, the rollerball. And that's, you know, I assume there will be always a need for bowling alley, I don't know, you know?
Well, the last two things I would also point out is the, I guess the ambivalence of the post office being where it's at, because the complaint is that, well, some of the adjoining parking areas are used by people who are going to use the post office when the post office is full as far as their parking spaces. So, you know, that, they found that a bit annoying in that regard, but, yeah, I think in, in general, the other would be the Procos property on the corner and people, you know, wondering how that would develop eventually or what have you, so.
No comment.
No comment.
You know, the interesting thing about the post office-
I'm just telling it like it is.
There, I was at one of the neighborhood, meeting some of the neighborhood execs and they thought the post office footprint should be enlarged. They thought there's, there's just too many things, it's too busy a post office to have that footprint. Where they expand to is another matter entirely. I don't know how they'd actually increase, and I think really what they're saying is the parking is hard to get in and out. The front office desk could be actually expanded. I don't, you know, again, the trends are the, you know, where we're going with, you know, mail and packages.
Well, yeah, and when you speak of signage, I don't think that they have like a one-way as far as when, when somebody comes in from the, from the Shell side, Shell gas station side and tries to go in that way and gums everybody up, you know, so, you know, that-
Fortunately, most of people go there and know what they're doing.
There's a one-way. It's definitely a one-way, do not, but what you're going to do with all this talk is put them out on East State Street. I mean, where is the land? Where are they can, you know, commercial places?
Can he drive? Right next to UPS. Unfortunately, I cannot stay for months, so I can table my discussion with Nancy's return next week if that suits you guys. Mr. Paskey, Mr. Lo, did you guys have reports to share?
Arts Parks and Rec Master Plan Meeting next Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
The multipurpose rooms at the community center.
Next Thursday at 6:00?
6:00 PM multipurpose center, or multipurpose rooms at the community center. And I think that's all I have for this morning, afternoon.
Paul, what did you say? You said that ODOT safety assessment presentation is May eighth, where is that?
May eighth, it's at the community center. It will also be in the multipurpose type room, or the room they used to have karate on that evening. I do not have a time there, they would like to try to catch some like late afternoon, early evening.
Okay.
Is it like an open house where people can come and go or?
That's what, that was the intent, they had to display it. I think we're going to meet one more time before, or at least have a conference call.
And I know that it's not directly related to planning, but we are going to have a public hearing or start for the electrical aggregation, I think that's May first, 6:30. It's really the structure of the aggregation council, so to speak. So this would be the first step in saying, okay, we're going to build, you know, because we're working with different government entities ourselves in this, in the county, how does that look? And at that point, how do you go forward with that guidelines and eventually to get an RFP for electrical aggregation within the county and the city? So that will be May first, that'll be the first of a couple hearings. The other one will probably be done out in the county. I don't know the location yet, they're kicking around either that Hocking area or Amesville area to start with. Mostly because I guess there's a rural co-op, like a co-op to the northwest part of Athens that would not be any aggregation shift out.
Okay.
So just letting you know.
All right, Mr. Paskey.
Two, two quick things. BZA last week approved Allen McMillan's project at the, what I'm calling a Zero Washington Congress, kind of right now, it's the old frontier building. And if you're looking at the, or sitting in the diner, looking across the parking lot.
Cornwell parking lot.
Cornwell parking lot, you'll see a large empty garage type building there. His variance was for six different issues, front, rear and side yard setbacks, building coverage and lot, total lot coverage and ratio, number of units to their square footage for a lot. And that was approved. So that will be a Title Forty-one project that will be coming forward someday. Just want to give you a heads up that that's in the works.
And in terms of frontage, he's the adjacent property owner, and does that require deed restriction?
I will, that will be yes. He'll have to have some deed restrictions, some easement of access, et cetera, that will be required, but since he owns the property adjacent, he'll be able to do that pretty easily.
Okay. And of course, fire protection will have to go through.
We'll have to go through, that's all the Title Forty-one stuff that we'll go through.
Is it one of those variances where ba, you basically, there's, it's an existing footprint sort of thing, so?
Five of the six variance requests were pretty much yes, because of existing footprint.
Right. Okay. Just want to get a sense.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, sorry.
Then the last one is, is I'm talking about Stimson, Argo Strike has come in and Sharpe can put him on the agenda for an open communication at the next meeting at the Cheese Barn, old Cheese Barn building that he has on Stimson now, Jackie has over there. He's wishing to add on greater than 25% of the building, so it too will be a Title Forty-one. But as of his initial presentation to me, it will not require any variances and he is